I'd like to call the meeting to order. And in the first order of business is for a motion to convene into executive session. So I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to convene into executive session to approve the executive session minutes for March 5th, 2024 regarding Cato Field pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws 4246582 arbitration. Sandra Barron versus Situate School Department pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws 4246582 pending litigation. Matter pertaining to litigation pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 4246582 unemployment dispute. Superintendent's evaluation of performance goals pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws 46425A1, job performance of an individual. Matter pertaining to litigation pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws. Oh, I don't have to, I don't have to repeat those, do I? Oh, maybe I do. Pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws 4246582 unemployment dispute. And in the matter of North City Elementary Drinking Water pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws 4246582 potential litigation.
Do I have a second? Second, all those in favor? Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to the April School Committee meeting. And our first order of business is to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. In the back. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Prior to us reconvening into open session, we were in executive session. And the matters in the executive session items on the agenda were discussed. And there were two votes taken during that time. I know that I would be remiss if I didn't turn this over to you to do your safety, required safety.
Please note the exits are to the side.
Okay. So we're going to move the agenda around a little bit. We want, we want to make sure that anyone that's here as a guest, they get to present, you know, ahead of the other items on the agenda. My favorite part of any agenda is when we have students. So I'd like to turn it over to Erica McCormick right now to discuss Situate High School student, Nettie Hartley.
So there's a microphone right there. And the reason why we have to speak into that is so that everybody at home can hear you. That's not so people in the room can hear you, but so people at home can hear you. Okay. So is it on? So I had asked to have Nettie come. Oh, I guess I totally violated everything I just said.
So I had asked to have, well, actually about a month ago, I had the pleasure of talking with Nettie after Mass one day on a Sunday. And we're just, it was like a coffee reception after church. And I had been reading different things about you in the school newsletters and things that you're doing. And I'm like, and since I saw you at that reception, said, I pulled you aside and said, please tell me again, all the things that you're doing, because it was too overwhelming for me to catch up to it all. Because I'd hear about this great thing and that great thing. And so I had reached out to the superintendent and said, you know, Superintendent Andrews, we have this amazing student here at this school. I would love her to come and share all the great things that she does, not only for the school, but for the town. And superintendent said, reach out to the, the principal, because I wasn't following the correct chain of command. Well, actually I was talking to you first, but, and, and Mr. Hassel said, absolutely. And, and I'll have you know, where did you go to elementary school? Was it North Situate? And in that email thread, the North Situate principal, Socio was like, oh my gosh, little Nettie's doing this. So it was a big chitter chatter amongst school committee member email things going on. But now that we have you here, I'd like you to share with the school committee and the people. Of course, this is all being videotaped, so people can go back and watch it later. And then the audience here, some of the things that not only have you done for the school, but also for the town, because it's very impressive, so much so that I can't repeat it.
Where should I stand over here?
You can stand here so you can see both, and then they can see you.
Perfect.
They meeting the camera.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Nettie Hartley, and I am a 10th grader here at Situate High School. I like to keep myself as busy as possible, just because that's just my lifestyle that I've always liked. I'm, to start off, I'm the sophomore class secretary. So I like making sure everything is organized for our class and making sure we're in the right direction towards senior year. I am on the Rides Student Advisory Council, where there is one student representative per each school on the council. That is, I liked, I really liked going to that one. We meet once a month at Ride headquarters in Providence. And we like to talk about what we can do to better the state with education and what we can do to give back to the schools. So this year, every year, they pick a topic to work on. Last year, they changed a certain curriculum part in the English department. This year, we were throwing it back and forth between Students Against Vaping, Healthy Earth, and a few other ideas. And we decided on helping for a better earth. So we started this initiative to take over Rides' social media platforms for Earth Day and the week, which is April 22nd. We are gonna take over their social media platforms and speak as students to fellow students on what we can do to make the earth better. So for our kids and for us down the line, it's, we're in a better place where our earth is healthy and we're all doing great in it. So I was able to get Situate, Situate High School a student's school spotlight. And we will be recording a video in the next week to feature our greenhouse, which we are one of the only schools in the state to have such a thriving greenhouse that we're able to show off to everybody. Where we're connecting with the Broad Class Inc. Club here at Situate. And we'll be getting that out. So that's pretty cool. I'm on the student, the Chronic Absenteeism Committee for, what's her name? Commissioner Green. So that's, it's busy. The information that comes out in that group is, I never imagined. The amount of numbers that they've been able to collect over the last several years and how they're able to pinpoint the schools that need more help than others is, that is really neat to hear. So on that committee, we're working to see why chronic absenteeism is such an issue and what we can do to help that. Because obviously, students need to be in the school to get the education that they need. So that's keeping busy. And Situate is doing very well with keeping our attendance up. And we're on the up slope of getting more students in the school. Oh, over the year, I got to serve as National Junior Grange Ambassador for the organization that I grew up in, which was the Grange. I am a third generation Grange member. And we, in the Grange, we mainly focus on giving back to our communities and being rooted in the communities. So we do a lot of Grange dinners and community service projects, just to make communities a better place that we can all be involved in. So as Ambassador of the National Junior Grange, I was able to travel across the country. We went on over 15 different trips throughout the year. We went to over 11 states, eight of them, which I had never been to before. And we, I just got to public speak about the good that our juniors are doing, which we have almost 2,000 across the country, junior Grangers. And trying to teach people that even as kids, we're just as important as every other person out there. And we can still be as much of an active member as the adults can in our Grange. So I was able to go around giving speeches. Sometimes it was just in front of 30 people. In August, at the Washington County Fair in Richmond, I was able to introduce performers, which were around in that crowd, there was over 2,000 people there. So very nerve wracking, but it was really cool to be able to go up on the stage and public speak, where the Grange has definitely been able to help me get to the point where I am now, where I can stand up here and talk and in front of those 2,000 people. So it's definitely helped me in my own school career as I'm able to help get things out as class secretary or on the Ride Committee. And just to represent our students in ways that they should be represented. As, like I said, we are just as important. And we are the next generation who's up and coming, and we need to have a voice in things. So I like helping to provide that voice.
I called Nettie maybe 10 minutes before I showed up to this meeting and said, oh, by the way, I'm just gonna have you come up and talk. She had zero opportunity to prepare. She didn't even know, as far as she knew, she was just gonna sit and I was gonna say something. But this, this is what she got.
Thank you.
Nettie, how did you get to be on the Ride Commission with the Commissioner?
On this Chronic Absenteeism Committee? We were at one of our Student Advisory Council meetings. We were discussing it as Commissioner Green came in, as we work hand in hand with her. And she came in and she started talking about the other things that she's doing, like the Chronic Absenteeism Committee. And she wanted student representatives on there to get their voices and to understand their perspectives on why students are out all the time. So I was, Chronic Absenteeism is definitely something that affects all students, even if it's just one student who's very chronically absent, where it affects the whole class, not just them. So I knew that I wanted to partake in that. So when she asked for people to volunteer to be on it, I was one of the ones who raised my hand. And we've, there's about, I think there's three of us students across the state on the committee that we've been working with.
And how'd you get to be on the Youth Advisory for Ride?
Mr. Hassel last year put out a Google form for everybody where you, students were able to put a name suggestion in. And my name was put on the form. So Mr. Hassel called me down to his office one day and we talked about it. And he told me things that we would be doing and obligations. So I went home and talked to my mom and dad about it before saying yes. And when I said I'd be able to do it, we got right in contact with them. And I've just, I restarted in July, I believe, started working on it. And as the school year came around, we started working even harder on it. It's been busy. We meet at least once every month, and then we'll have occasional Zoom meetings, especially now with Earth Day and our project coming closer. We've been working a lot more. But it's, sometimes there's slow moments and sometimes it's, keep on working.
Well, Nettie, thank you so much for coming. You are just such a wonderful shining light for Situate. We're glad to have you.
Nettie, I'd just like to say, you are so articulate and poised. And I just feel like we're in good shape with our future leaders here. I mean, you are a superstar. I mean, listen to you talk and you're so, you're so impressive. And I wish you lots of luck. Do you know what you want to do?
I know I want to go into education.
That's a chakra.
Without Mr. Hassel.
I don't want Mr. Hassel's joint.
Show the mic.
I know I want to work with kids in the long run. So if it's in the medical field, with my mom and my dad working, public service and medical, I know that's something that I would like to continue down the way.
You are, it's a testament to both your mom and dad that you are, turned out to be such a wonderful, wonderful person and doing so much. At such a young age, I'll tell you, that resume, keep building it, you know? It helps.
I would have never gotten to the place I was without my Situate family, that's for sure. You always feel, you walk into school every morning and there's at least three staff members in the hallway greeting you coming in. And if you're standing in the hallway, you always have one coming over to talk to you.
Nettie, you're getting me choked up here. Mike, Mike, we gotta get this on tape.
We definitely have, I can't say it enough, when people are considering coming here to just do it. You know, it's, it's one of the best places I think you could be with other, compared to other schools. It's definitely the home away from home for a lot of students.
And I know outside this school, you have deep faith and you also, you know, altar servers. So you are a busy lady.
Yes, I am.
Congratulations.
And Nettie, you said you were a sophomore, correct?
Yeah.
So you have two more years.
Yes.
So it certainly sounds as though you have a pulse on what's going on in our school district. So as a member of the school committee, I would invite you back anytime. We'd love to hear from you and thank you for being here with us today.
Thank you for having me.
So speaking of superstars, we heard from, from Nettie. And now we would like to call up another, another student that's putting Situate on the map. Our superstar spelling bee winner, Elena Pagliarini. And I would also like to call up Mrs. Tumi to come on up. Come on up. Let's, let's. Eliana, oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Eliana. Don't ask me to spell it.
Congratulations, though. And so we'd like to hear a little bit about your experience. But before that, we would like to present you with, with a little something from the school committee and the district.
Eliana, we're so incredibly proud and excited for you. Your grit, your determination, and your perseverance are all unmatched. You worked so hard to reach each goal that you have set for yourself, conquered each milestone in this competition with flying colors. And we can't wait to continue to cheer you on as you take on the national competition in Washington DC. We are honored to be learning and growing alongside you each day and feel so privileged to have you representing Situate and Hope Elementary School. And this is for you, on behalf of the school committee. Another one, she has, every single week.
So how did you get to be such an amazing speller, Ellie?
Probably. It all started with my love of reading. I was a fluent reader by like three and four. I had books memorized. I was learning more and more words. And that's when my vocabulary started to grow. Now that I've learned, so in my books, I find a lot of these words. And I like writing myself. I use a lot of these words in my writing. I can't tell you how many documents I have on my Chromebook, but.
Quite impressive. Like Ellie has shared some of the things that she has written with me. And I basically have to pull out a dictionary.
But I'm definitely going to be an author using these words. I know a lot of other spellers have their way with words, and that's what they've become. I'm following the same path. It took a lot of perseverance. Some of these words are in other languages, so I have to like study the origins.
She comes up to me often and to the other teachers. Go ahead, try them out, see if I can do them.
Don't ask me.
Wait a minute, what is the word?
I'll get one. Tic douleux.
Tic douleux.
Your favorite, right?
Yes, French.
It's very French.
Yes, it's French, it's like, T I C, space, D O U L O U R E U X.
Wow.
Ask you to spell words in other languages in these competitions?
Yes.
Oh, my goodness.
So I have a book called Words of Wisdom that I use to trace back the roots and origins and the endings and the beginnings and middles of words. And then you kind of have to figure it out from there. Because like there's German words, Spanish words, Italian words, French words.
Excellent.
Japanese, which I didn't know was a thing, but.
Now, where do you, where do you go from here? Is there a national competition?
Yes.
Want to tell us a little bit about your next step?
So my next step, on May 26th, I will be flying to Maryland, Washington DC. I will stay at a convention center for an activity called Be Week, which is where you get to basically meet all the other spellers who have made it as far as you. You do fun things like crafts, inventing stuff. I don't know what yet, but I'm really excited. And it goes throughout the week. Even if you lose, you get to stay there.
Oh, nice.
There is preliminaries, quarterfinals, semifinals, and then the finals. What's hard about this is because in the preliminaries, which is the very first round, there is over 200 spellers coming there for the preliminaries. And it has three rounds in it. The first one, you spell a word from the hardest set that they give you to study. The second one, you get a diff, you have to guess a definition from the second hardest one. So it's not all about.
It's not like sounding words out. You're gonna know what they are too.
You, you gotta know what they mean. So it's not all spelling, it's also vocabulary. The third one can be any word in the new dictionary that Webster just put out.
I have a funny feeling you're not gonna have any problems with any of that.
I mean, I don't know yet, but.
She also wanted our district to be last year in the fourth grade, our 10th, fourth through eighth grade students. So she definitely represented very, very well. And this was your goal this year, right?
Yes.
So this Mark Hattie, perfect grade teacher, asked in the beginning of the year for all students to set a goal for themselves for the year, right?
Yeah, I said, I want to go to national.
National, and what she said, she was like, maybe we should focus on the speed first?
Yeah.
And you were like, I'm going all the way, right?
Yeah. I'm gonna be a very dangerous speller when I'm in eighth grade.
Oh, goodness gracious, watch out. Well, we're happy to have you and thank you so much. If anybody else from the committee would like to make any comments?
I'm looking forward to hearing how things went in Washington DC.
Good luck, everybody.
To her, Ellie.
So I would like to ask the committee if we could take a couple of agenda items out of order. I'd like a motion for us to move item number E, Presentation by General Centracchio and Brian Sedgely on the Veterans Programs in Situate Schools, up for the next agenda item to be heard. And then immediately after that, the Lions Club donation to the Situate School Department. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I'd like to invite up General Centracchio. I know, tough act to follow. I don't have to.
So Ellie?
Just before the general gets started.
Can you spell Centracchio? Took me 10 years to learn it.
As, as always, there are cookies in the back anytime we have celebrations. There are cookies there, please help yourself.
I'll take it. I want to call Nettie up here, please. In the United States Army and military across the world, we have a particular thing we, we do. And it's called a command coin. And the coin represents recognizing excellence. And you certainly fit that category very well. I think we will leave this room tonight knowing we have a, a real good generation coming in. I'm not sure, right, this present one is any good, but, but you're showing that there's some real good promise to us. So this is a coin. It's a, called a command coin. And you presented it to someone recognizing excellence. And it's also called a challenge coin. How old are you? I'll tell you the rest of the story when you're 21. But the first thing I'd like to do is present this to you on behalf of all of us having served in the military, recognizing excellence. So please keep that on you at all times, 24 hours a day. Because the rest of the story comes later when you're 21. Thank you. Out of hand for Ellie. Well, first of all, let me thank all of you and let you know how important you are to the very survival of this country. I think you might agree that we are in need of much education on upcoming generations as to who we are and what some of the basic values that seem to have been pushed aside over the last several years perhaps. But this presentation we have is designed to ask you to consider putting some of that back into the school curriculum. I recognize your curriculum is, is best at having a little bit of wiggle room. And I understand that. So I'm not asking anything beyond, I, I think, your capability to do. And with that, I'd like to recognize why we're here. I have been, I think I can honestly say, I've been to every single school in the state of Rhode Island and probably other states also. Not every school in every other state, but other states. And I've noticed that there's, there's a particular thing that is present in some schools and other schools not. And I think it has much to do with the leadership, you, that perhaps might be able to change that. So we're giving you a, a potential format and a footprint that you might consider using from time to time. And it's, it's given as, as a matter of a wide variety of possibilities. Looking at, there is a definite, definite difference between high school and certainly the first grade. But all those first, second, third grade and all the way up have yet to experience, I think, what values are all about. And what it means that when we, Pledge of Allegiance as an example, there's something that we expect, and that is that we hold our hand over our heart. We look at the flag and we present ourselves in recognizing the importance of what the Pledge of Allegiance is. We also recognize that when we're listening to the National Anthem, we stand on our feet and military renders a salute and all others place their right hand over their heart. I can't tell you how many times I've been in different environments and I see people doing things completely different from that without paying attention to what's going on, continuing to talk or perhaps doing other things that have nothing to do with what they should be doing. So I'd like to introduce that back into the community somehow. And I try. Every single time I have one of our concerts, I start it with, ladies and gentlemen, please stand. The National Anthem is being played. It's appropriate to have your hand, your right hand over your heart, face the music or the flag and, and see what happens. It's amazing that when they're told that and advised that, they will do it. And I think that's where we come in. To give us the opportunity of telling a story and having that story told throughout the entire educational system. And from the time they enter the, perhaps even kindergarten. I'm sure you see flags in different places that you wouldn't expect to see them. The kids realize what they're looking at. But they only realize what they're looking at if they're told what they're looking at and they're educated accordingly. So I think I'd like to do is, first of all, it's hard to come after these two little kids here. It's, I just got my first brand new great grandchild. What do you think her name is? The girl that just left here? Yeah. So I just got to tell you something. Coming up with a good generation. So with that, I'd like to present Brian Sedgely. And incidentally, we're all veterans here. I am, Brian is, Colonel Vaschan is, and Chief Master Sergeant of all the kingdom, Dwight Farah. Any other veterans in the, in the room? Go ahead, thank you for serving. So with that, Brian, you got it.
Thank you. Is it working?
Yes.
Okay, good. So basically what we did was we put a PowerPoint together. It's not solid. You know, we're looking for any type of feedback that we can get from the school committee. So we can go in and change it so that, you know, the curriculum is something the kids are gonna learn from. So if you can go to the next slide and we introduce ourselves as post 19 from North Situate. And then we're gonna go and introduce ourselves as, you know, myself, I joined the military back in 1984. I retired in 2019, 35 years of service, 20 years of active, 15 reserve. I was a military police and I had the fortune of traveling the world. I've been to over 54 countries doing dignitary protection. So yeah, that's, that's me. Next. So the Legion is a patriotic veterans group and it's made up of all the branches that we have here. Next. Stop me anytime. So the general wanted to go ahead and use our preamble as a guide for teaching. So I'm not gonna read through all this here, but, you know, as you can see, you know, we want to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States, maintain law and order. You know, like I said, you can read, read what's up there. Promote peace and goodwill on earth. All right, okay, next. And then we're gonna ask the students if they know a veteran. If they know a veteran, get them to interact with us, you know? Try to find out a little bit about who they know as a veteran. A lot of veterans don't talk about their, their story, you know? But some, some veterans do. So maybe the students can go in and interact a little bit about their veteran, who they know. Next. So it's a confusion between Memorial Day and Veterans Day. Does anybody get confused between the two? So we have a little clarification here. So basically, on Memorial Day, you'll have people come up and say, Happy Memorial Day. Well, a Memorial Day is the time of honoring and mourning the US personnel who died during their service. So there's other ways of, of. So there's other ways of, of mentioning their support on Memorial Day. So I'm gonna go to the next one. And different things that you could say, right? Wish you a blessed Memorial Day, remembering our fallen on Veterans Day, thinking of those veterans no longer with us today. Remembering all our heroes today in uniform who made the ultimate sacrifice to defend our country. You know, a lot of people, they see a gravestone, they see a flag, they don't think much about it, you know? Okay, someone passed away, there's a flag there. But every grave tells a story, all right? That person was buried there. Off to the left is a gentleman here, he's 27 years old from Arizona. He was assigned to a battalion that, what is it now? The Special Troops, I'm sorry, 508th Special Troopers Battalion out of Fort Bragg. And he died July 22nd, 2012 from an IED. And it's probably his spouse that's laying in front of the, the gravestone, you know, mourning his death. So we're trying to open that up to the kids that, you know, these veterans give a lot and we, we wanna go ahead and try to get them to realize that when you see a veteran, to give them some type of acknowledgement, you know, and, and what they, what they did during their service. Next. Veterans Day, okay? On Veterans Day, we're honoring the American veterans for their patriotism, love of country, and their willingness to serve. And that there is on November 11th, the, the first one was November 11th, 1918. And next. So as you know, veterans come in different forms. On the bottom left, you have the gentleman who's in a uniform. Top left, you have a, an older woman who was in the Marine Corps. Veterans are very proud of, of where they came from. You know, a lot of, you'll see them wearing the ball caps. The general has his jacket on tonight. They may be wearing a pin, they're very proud. So getting the students to, to realize or to look for that, you know, on Memorial Day, they could actually go up and, and say something to them. Next. What do we do here in Situate? So we have the parade. One of the things we're trying to do is we're trying to get, anybody been to the parade, Memorial Day, Veterans Day Parade? We're trying to get a little bit more involvement with the students. I know when, when I was a young kid, I'd come to the Situate Parade and all the, all the Boy Scouts and the baseball teams and the Girl Scouts are all out marching. We've kind of gotten away from that, you know? So we're trying to get the youth back involved into, into attending the parades. Right there is just, you know, you got the school band on the bottom left, you have Boy Scout in the middle, American Legion marching up in the right. And we feel that if we can go ahead and get students involved and coming out marching, what's that gonna do for the spectators? They're gonna come out too, right? Why? Because their kids are marching. So that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to go ahead and get that, let's free the court, get those kids out there marching. We're gonna talk about respecting the flag, you know? How to, how to display the flag? You know, the flag should never be flipped upside down. If it's flipped upside down, it's, it's a sign of distress. So I'll make sure that people aren't wearing the flag as a piece of clothing that shows disrespect. We've got, we've got a bunch of things up there. Leaving, leaving a flag out during inclement weather, we don't wanna do that. Wanna bring the flag in again, that shows respect to the flag. Okay, next. We're gonna talk about what is a union? The PowerPoint would, would pop that up. So we wanna have it kind of interactive with the kids, you know? What is the blue portion of the American flag? And see if they know that and what the stars stand for. Again, how many stripes are in the flag and what it stands for? And the folds, I know when I, when I retired after 35 years of service, they folded the flag for me and presented it to me afterwards. But every fold means something and I'm not gonna go through everything. But it covers, you know, the mother, the support that the mother gave that, that child growing up and getting him into the military. The father, you know, it, it covers a lot of different things and I'm not gonna go through each one, but. We talk about taking the flag down. When the flag's brought down, you know, what do we do with it? We, we're gonna go ahead and fold it up properly, okay, to show respect. Whoops, that's right. I'll just kind of cover the, the shape of the flag when it's all folded up. It, it, similar to George Washington's cap, as you can see up in the right. Next. Just let them know that one of fallen soldier passes away, a flag is presented to, to the family member. And that basically says the, the, on behalf of the President of the United States, the United States, whatever branch it may be from, okay? I'm sorry, yep, we'll say from the army. In a grateful nation, please accept the flag as a symbol of our appreciation for your loved ones. And that flag is given to that family member. Over here to the left, we have Lieutenant Colonel Carl Remmler, who was a member of our post. He just recently passed away. He served in the South Pacific. What a great guy, you know? I mean, you sit down with this gentleman and just, just a real sweetheart, you know? Unfortunately, he passed at the age of 102. We have Mr. Everett Grist, he was a World War II veteran. And I think it's important to go ahead and let the kids know that we have veterans here in, in Situate who have, who have given up a lot, you know, who have seen a lot. So it's important that they know about it. Next. Here we have Theodore Dexter. Over, everyone knows where Dexter Pond is located. He went to Situate for a short time up to ninth grade. Then he went over to Central High School in Providence, because I guess we didn't have a high school at the time. And he was, he was killed while in the army at the age of 20 during the Battle of the Bulge. Okay, next. And again, a little military history, I don't know how many people realize that we actually had a radio listening post here in, in Situate. During World War II, they were listening to communications over in Africa. And we were one of, I think, two or three, I believe, in the, in the country that was used to forward intelligence to, to our allies. And then basically, you know, what can you do to show your appreciation to a veteran? So again, this is just kind of down and dirty. And we'd like to try to get any input that we can, I'm sorry to have my back to you. Try to get any input from you and from, you know, from, from the town as to what we can do to get the kids more involved. That's all I have. Questions?
Thank you, Brian and, and General Centracchio. I know that our schools, our, our schools and districts in our surrounding area, Smithfield, Pontagansett, you know, they, they do have a nice, nice programs, you know, recognizing veterans and trying to keep it in the forefront because there was such sacrifice. And so, you know, we, we did meet with General Centracchio and, and we talked about some of these things. So A, I want to thank everyone here for their service. And I am, I am very optimistic that we will be getting some of these, some type of veteran recognition or programs in our schools. And I'd like to turn it over to the school, the superintendent to talk to you about that. I, I think she's got a plan on what's the next steps for us.
Yeah, I, I have spoken, I've spoken to the general a, a number of times and I've spoken to the building principals about the things that we have talked about, the parade and some assemblies and ways that we can get information to kids and involve our youth in veterans and, and recognition. So I think probably based on this presentation, my recommendation to the school committee would be for me to have the Director of Curriculum form a committee with the principals, the Director of Curriculum and a representative from your group to talk about what are the next steps? What makes sense in the buildings? What is the timeline and how does that, how does that work?
I think that I would appreciate. I would appreciate it too, like after you meet with your team and General Centracchio and whoever else he feels is important to bring to the table that maybe through your superintendent's report, you can keep us up to date on, you know, what's happening, what's, you know, Memorial Day is around the corner. Veterans, you know, the Veterans Day is in the fall and, you know, kind of just keep, you know, give us a briefing on what that looks like for our own schools.
Absolutely, I can update the committee. And we'll make sure that the principals also put those activities in their newsletters so that parents are aware.
I think too, we've asked the members of Post 19 to volunteer to be affiliated with each of the schools in Situate. And that could be the resource for those principals to be able to be there, ask a particular question, we'll get it answered. But as you develop the different programs, you surely will have our full support with a specific individual for a particular school.
So a liaison from each school from?
Yeah, good.
General, if you have those liaisons assigned already, if you wanna forward that information to me, I'll make sure that I get it directly to the principals.
I'd, I'd just like to make a comment. In 1983, I was a recruiter for the Coast Guard. And I came to the Situate School Department and recruiters weren't allowed in this, in, in, in this building. And I got it reinstated and I'm glad to see that it's continued when you have your career days, that you have the military recruiters there. Because I think it's very important to have that option for the students. You know, it's great to have them all go to college, you know? We, we all support the college kids, but there's also the option joining the military and getting an education there as well. But that was not, not allowed. When I, when I walked into the building, I was told I had to leave. And I just got that straightened out and within weeks, I was back in the building and, and we were, the recruiters were welcomed back in this building and.
It's a different day, Dwight, and it's unfortunate that happened, but I, thank goodness, like that's not the way.
I'm just glad that you continued that along those route.
You know, I have to just put a plug for my dad. I mean, I'm a huge, the Colonel's gonna kill me because she's so sick of hearing me. But my dad was a World War II veteran, South Pacific, you know, Battle of Oakenour, some major, major battles he was in.
The gentleman that straightened that situation out was my dad. And he was chairman of the school committee and he was World War II.
Oh, really? I guess it all comes back to, it all, it's all connected, right? So.
So with that, I think I'd like to, once again, on behalf of all of us having served and presently serving in uniform, thank each of you. I think you are really the key. And I read today's paper, have you read today's paper yet? Front page says 17-year-olds are being allowed to vote in the presidential primary for the first time today. Little concerning, I'm not sure these 17-year-olds really know what they're voting for or what the whole thing represents. But I did talk to Carol earlier and I do understand you have some pretty progressive programs in Situate. I appreciate that. But I think the average 17-year-old doesn't really know. Maybe they're playing a video game as far as I can see with, where they get their news is from social media. And I'm not sure that's the right place to get it. They have to get it from the school system. They have to get it from someone that's reliable and not giving you fake news and all the other stuff that goes with, with social media. So with that, I think I can say on behalf of all of the veterans, thank you so much and looking forward to having a robust program. And if you wanna go to Afghanistan, we can make that happen too.
What were the other countries you went to, Brian?
It's also called a challenge coin, you know that, right? What does that mean when you pull it? No, yeah, but if I match it, you buy the drink. Thank you very much.
I just wanna say thank you for being here. I think this is, you said, we don't have a lot of room in our curriculum, but there needs to be a place for something as important to this. And I don't think people want to forget what our veterans do, but I think sometimes we need to have a reminder. And I completely understand when you say kids need to know better sometimes. I've seen kids stand and not know, and where are they taught that? If not through their parents or through, and some people just don't have that. So I think it's tremendous, I can see this through, you know, pre-K up through seniors. I think, Mr. Hassel, there's probably a tremendous opportunity to get, we've got some, I'm not signing you up, Nettie, because you do enough, but we have some amazing students that have formed clubs and organizations. To harness that, to bring that back together, it's a beautiful thing. I've, I've also had thoughts of, you know, what do we do to honor our veterans? What do we do to honor our military? I happen to be a mom right now of a, a Marine and I couldn't be more proud of him. So bringing that recognition to, to our small town of what's happening. Do we have a veterans wall? Do we have an active duty wall? I don't know, but some of those things to really, and it's great. I have a son that graduated college and did wonderful things. I have a son that chose to go into the military and I could not be prouder of each of them for their own special things. And I think sometimes we put so much emphasis on this four-year education that we forget the true value. I, I, I'm not gonna keep going because I'll get too emotional, but of the people who choose, who choose to serve and protect and the ultimate price some pay and thank you for what you do. No, thank you.
Thank you. Let me, let me close with an observation, just something you may not be aware of. This year is, this past year is the first year we have launched a Situate Hall of Fame. Not sure if you know that or not, but we did it. And we put two people in, one is a Martin and one is a Legacy. We put Amen LaMontagne in and we put Art Trahan in as a Legacy. What do we like you to do? And Dwight just brought out something I didn't know. There are many people that in our past in Situate that did great things. They need to be recognized and you need to forward them to us and have us, have them vetted and, and inducted into the Situate Hall of Fame. So I'm pretty proud of that and I'd ask your, your support. And if you know anybody within the education system that you think should be considered, we'd really appreciate that. So do you have any, you wanna say, Beana? Anybody else in military? Gene? Okay, thank you so much. God bless each of you.
Thank you again. So. Come on up, come on, you can come right up and. Okay. So this is for the people. No, no, I'm sorry, I'm only going to repeat that so the people at home or it gets recorded. So the question was, do the children into the, in school today in Situate say the Pledge of Allegiance? So, yes.
Yes, every day.
Every day.
Every day.
Every day.
Every day. Yeah, every day.
But do they really, like the general said, really know what they're saying? And especially as they get older, you know, so. Exactly. So we're also honored tonight to have members of the Lions Club here. And a couple of meetings ago, it's always a painful meeting when you're always having budget presentations from building principals. But our, our, one of our principals came up and had in her budget a proposal for the Clover Book. And immediately Erica McCormick said, well, you know, the Lions does that work? And, and maybe instead of it being, because we, our budget is so tight, especially this year, that would be something that the Lions may be interested in. And lo and behold, it happened. So thank you, Erica. And I'd like to call up, you know, members of the Lions Club, Dwight and Ken and come on up and, and, and Tim. And talk to us a little bit about what happened and maybe you could frame it up for us, Erica.
Yeah, Becca, you as well. Sorry, calling you up here. Oh, good, she came prepared. So we have two students at Hope Elementary that are visually impaired and need this special device called the Clover Book. It is an electronic device. And when I found out about this need, the Lions Club of Situate, Lions Club, International Lions Club, anywhere in the world are site-related. We're, we're. are, um, site related, where, where knights of the blind, if they will, if you will. Um, and this is, this is one of the many things that we do is we help people who are visually impaired. Again, just one of the many things. So, um, all I did was, was bridge, um, everyone together. Um, and, um, you had sent a, a great video of a student who was demonstrating what this Clover book did. Um, and it, and how the, there's, it's like a fifteen minute video. And the one thing in this video that stuck with me is a student said by using this device, it created independence. She didn't have to ask the teacher for help. And, and that's, I was like, wow, like, how can you say no to that? But I see you're holding a piece of paper. Did you want to say something?
Yeah. So I just, um, just to give like a little background on the Clover book, um, as Ms. McCormick said, there, it's for students with visual impairments. So like they have iPads that they can enlarge to a certain extent too. But this device actually allows the students, they can focus it on anywhere on, in the room, like on that poster with those words. And it actually enlarges, they can change the background color, they can magnify, they can zoom in. So they only see one word at a time. It's truly an incredible piece of technology and that it's enabling them. They can actually take a picture of it. So as they're taking notes, they can refer back to what they were seeing and write their own notes. Um, so it's making it so that they don't need an adult sitting next to them at all times. It gives them exactly, as you said, the independence to be able to access the curriculum and participate in the classroom in any way that their peers without visual impairments are able to do. So it was a device that we needed to purchase for these kiddos, that we didn't second guess purchasing for them. But thank you to the Lions Club. It was a hefty purchase and we're so grateful for, um, your support, your true champions of education. We so appreciate your continuous collaboration, your support and your extremely generous contributions to our district and to our school community. Your generosity has enabled us to support the unique needs of all of our students, allowing us to further, further our mission of creating the best and most supportive school environment for each and every one of our students. So thank you so much once again.
I just also want to say that, you know, the Lions have been a good friend of Situate. Uh, they've done so much, but every single year, thank you, Ken, we do the vision screening in our schools and Erica. And, and so we really do appreciate it. And I do want to just follow up before we let, um, President, um, of our Lions Club speak. It was a hefty donation and I just can't again, on, you know, again, thank you all enough. Go ahead, Dwight.
I'm Dwight. I'm the Dwight Farron, the president of the Situate Lions. And I've, I'm the, just finishing up my second term. And I can tell you, it's been a great pleasure to be the president of the Situate Lions in the last couple of years. But have an opportunity like tonight to come here and talk about some of the other things that the Lions do. You know, everybody knows we do the Halloween parade. We do the Easter hunt we just had this past Saturday. And, and we did the sign that's out in front of this building. But to come back to our real roots of what we're, what the Lions are about, because the, she said the term, the knights of the, of the blind. That was given to us by Helen Keller in nineteen twenty-five at a Lions International Convention. And she came to the Lions and asked them to help her and, and to help people with blindness. So that is, it's one of our main goals. Erica called me with this and asked me if I could put it on my agenda for the board meeting. And I said, that most definitely it's right up our alley. And, uh, it was a nice discussion at the board meeting and it, and it, uh, flew by with no problem at all. And I just want to make sure that, that all your administrators know that this is something we can do. So that when further, further needs in this area or these two students you have, if they need anything else, we're right there. I want. Yeah, right. And these two individuals are the people that are coming to your school and do your screenings. The, and not only in this system, but in systems throughout the state. And, and I really appreciate, and Ken is also on the, uh, um, the Rhode Island Site Foundation as well. And is very active with that. And, uh, and I don't know if I want to let him talk because he has a tendency to go on. So, but, but, but we're, we are very pleased to be here to, to present a check this evening to you, to you, for the purchase of these Clover booklets. And, uh, and I wish only the best for these two students. And if there's anything that the Situate Lions can help you out. And if you know of any other projects that of, and it's not only that, we, we do children with cancer. It's a big supporter. We're a big supporter of Hasbro Children's Hospital. We do a lot of programs in that building. Ronald McDonald House, we, we, we presented them with a lot of money in the last, uh, in the time that I've been in the Lions. That's just amazing. So. And well, I'll be on that stage in a little while doing that with his, with the post and with the Situate Lions. So. Yeah. And diabetes is a big part of it as well. There's a lot to the Lions other than the Halloween parade and the Easter hunt. So who do I give this to? Okay, there you go, girl.
Okay. Well, there are some, there are cookies in the back still, if anyone would like to have a cookie. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of black coffee because now we're getting to the meat of the agenda. We should talk about the bills and to talk about the meeting minutes. So, you know, you're free to stay. But, uh, we are going to have a budget, uh, presentation at the end. But the next order of business is to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda to cover the minutes of the regular session of March fifth, twenty twenty-four and to cover the bills of the general fund bills of five hundred ninety-three, uh, two hundred ninety-eight dollars and twenty-four cents. Grant fund bills of nine thousand three hundred thirteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. Northwest Special Education for four hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents.
Any discussion? All those in favor? I'm going to turn the next agenda item over to our superintendent for the superintendent's report.
Good evening. Um, this is the meeting of the year that, um, the employee update, uh, is rather long. And it is one of my least favorite, uh, times of the year. This is the meeting where we do the non-renewals for, um, fiscal reasons. As is, uh, we've used the same process, um, all four years that I've been here. So, um, we did sit, uh, with Heather and made sure that, um, the union, uh, and I collaborated, um, around that process. As in past years, I will, uh, do my very best to try to do the recalls prior to the, uh, us leaving for the end of the school year. With our financial calendar changing this year to align to the July one rather than the April one. I'm not sure that I'm going to be able to meet that deadline, but that is absolutely my goal, um, to do that. So. That, uh, non-renewal list is, um, in your packet. As the committee is aware, the Northern Rhode Island Collaborative, of which we have been a member since, um, I have been here and, and previously is in the process of dissolution. Uh, the board, uh, did meet this week to review the progress of this dissolution. And as of this time, it appears there'll be a very small return of assets to the district. We hope that the process will be complete and the asset return may be happening in the next fiscal year after that July one. Uh, new fiscal year. As I continue to get more information, I'll keep the committee updated. The kindergarten registration process has transitioned to completely online. We continue to refine that system and we'll ask for feedback from parents prior to the end of the school year. At this time, it's still early, but it looks like we have about twenty students registered for Clayville, thirty students for North Situate and twenty students for Hope. We're going to track these numbers very closely over the next few months. The high school submitted an application for the Hayden grant for ten thousand dollars to upgrade and expand the software of their, um, animatage table in the biomedical program. This grant has moved on to the next level, which is a really good sign. We're, um, excited about that of approval. And we hope that we'll be awarded the funds to support this, um, expansion of the program. Rycast testing has begun and all reports from, from the buildings are that it's going very well. Principals are reporting, uh, in classrooms that children are trying really hard. They're using all of their time. They're very engaged so that, uh, they are working diligently, um, and they seem to be taking it very seriously. We're hopeful that all of our efforts, uh, prior to the testing will show good results when we get the scores next year. I want to thank all our teachers for preparing, preparing our students for the test and during the testing window. I recognize that it's a stressful time in the buildings for the kids, for the staff, uh, for the administrators. So, thank you, everyone, for kind of keeping the tone down and supporting our kids through this, uh, state assessment window. And that is my report for this evening.
Does anyone on the committee have any questions for the superintendent? Okay, um, we're moving to public comment. So if there's anyone at home or here tonight that would like to make a public comment, please remember to give us your name and your address. Why don't we take the people here tonight in the room? So if there's anybody here, uh, that would like to stand up and make a comment or, or ask a question, they can.
Paul Amaral, one seventeen, Trentown. Is there any way we can get one section of ble, bleachers on Cato down at Manning?
Not at this time. I think that, you know, we'll, you know, I, I don't think there's any plans to, to do that right now.
Can you make it a plan? Because they've been sitting there with a locked thing for three years and nobody on Manning. They don't have a bleachers down there.
Where, where at Manning doesn't have bleachers?
The soccer field and lacrosse.
No, there's one at the baseball field.
Not baseball, soccer.
No, I'm just, I'm agreeing with you. I said, I was just, I was just, I was thinking there were, but I don't think it's the, the bleachers. The bleachers are on the softball, uh, baseball side of things. And there's someone on the softball side of things.
They used to be at soccer. My daughter played soccer. They used to be at soccer.
Yeah.
Soccer and lacrosse.
Baseball, softball and soccer. Are they no longer, I'm right? Yeah. So they have them at soccer, baseball and softball.
Just so, okay.
It is small. These haven't been used in three years.
But are, are they, are they enough?
There's no plan at this point in time to increase the bleachers in that area. Okay. Anyone else would like to come up and make a, a comment? Just state your name and your.
Charles. Charles Collins, fourteen Main Street. Um, I have questions about the removal of bus monitors off of, um, middle and high school runs. Uh, my first question is, who did this exactly? I seen the email from, um, Jason Martin. He says, we. Now, does that mean him and Superintendent Andrews and just them?
Well, the.
Did the committee, I just, is the, the committee.
The committee does not make those school-based decisions.
Okay. So there was no vote taken?
No, there was no vote taken specifically on that. I think we were informed of that, but
You weren't informed of it.
Since the Inconvenience Act, uh, Charles, um,
What's the?
There was a, there was a.
Yeah, she has the right to make her decisions on her own. Yeah, I know. I know what it is.
School department, school committee doesn't get into those level of decisions anymore. We primarily supervise the superintendent and we, we, we watch over the budget. That's basically our, and, and the policies of the schools. I don't know, Erica, do you want to add to that?
We were made aware of the decision.
Yeah.
Do you want that decision?
Well, that's, we're, we're taking your questions at this point. Are we allowed to have extended conversation during public comment for Open Meeting Act violations?
Extended conversation?
I'm asking my attorney if you don't mind.
He loves doing. You can answer his questions. I, I mean, if it gets outside of, it's public comment, so he can ask a question, you can answer it. But obviously if it, you have discretion.
You draw us in.
The scope.
So if you're asking me if I personally approve of this from the knowledge that I was given at the time of my decision, absolutely. I do.
You do? Okay.
Do you ask anyone else or just me?
No, I asked you all as a group. I was, I, I wasn't speaking to you when I asked the question. I asked you as a whole.
I think when it was presented to the committee, it was also brought to our attention that I think that, I think we were the only one or one of two districts in the entire state that still had mo, monitors on secondary buses. So it's not like we are breaking ground here. It's like we are one of the only places that still had it. And I think that
I'll have to look into that. Okay.
Yeah. If you take a look, I, uh, Superintendent Andres and Mike, is that correct?
Well, you.
Most districts don't have those at all. That's correct. Yeah.
Okay. Um, is Attorney Anderson no longer the attorney?
Yeah, he's here, but he's, uh, we have one of his colleagues filling in tonight.
Just checking. Thank you. Um, all right. So then I guess I'll just ask you a question since it was your decision. Um, I was going over the contract for the bus monitors. And you were supposed to give them in the contract, it says you're supposed to give them ample time. Do you feel a couple of days notice about cutting their hours and wages in half? Do you feel that a few days is, is right? I mean, these, most of the monitors are Situate taxpayers.
I, I didn't, that contract was negotiated between the school committee and the bus monitors. And we implemented, um, the contract as it was, um, agreed upon. So.
Well, I've spoken with, with several business managers, former and current in other unions, not local two fifty-one. And they, they agreed with me and also the same thing. That contract almost looked like it was predetermined. I mean, they, you put right in there that you could cut their hours at your discretion. And then you did it several months after they signed it. So you gave them raises and you gave them like snow days and stuff like that. And then you immediately cut their hours in half.
So it was a, and I was part of it. It was a negotiated contract.
Yeah.
Negotiated. That means two sides meet.
No, I know. I know how it works.
That's.
But I feel like these monitors were duped. I don't.
How would they be duped? They were represented.
They were told that it probably wouldn't happen. And then it almost immediately did.
Know where your information is coming from, but I was.
My information is good, Colleen. But let's not go down that road.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to go down that. You don't want to do that. Yeah.
But Charles, just to, just to follow up on the negotiation, I have to tell you that they had, um, someone representing them from the Teamsters.
Oh, yeah, I know. I know. Tony. Yeah, yeah.
He's, he was, he was at the table.
Yeah, I know. I know. I know about Tony. Okay. Um, so again, two days, two days notice that you're cutting their hours.
Can I just, can I just follow up, Charles? Can I just finish one more?
Yeah, go ahead.
And you can go on with your questions. We also had, um, a mediator come in. So like it was very, um, a detailed conversation. I, it just didn't like, it wasn't willy nilly. Okay. I just wanted to be sure that you understood a little bit of the process.
Okay. Um, already.
Can I have a clarification?
Yeah.
A two days notice meeting, they only had two days.
Well, you sent them the email on the seventh and implemented it on the eleventh and there was a weekend in there. So they, uh, so they had two workdays notice. I mean, that's kind of shitty. I mean, not, not for lack of a better word. I mean, like you just cut their hours in half. I, I mean, they're all, they don't make a lot of money as it is now. You know, I, I mean, I'm personally, I, I mean, a lot of other people do too. I've had a lot of complaints. That's why I'm here. So, um, but that's okay. I mean, yeah, two days notice. That's absolutely, and you're right. So Metro, this has only been implemented for a short time, March eleventh. Metro already had one driver, um, refused to come because they didn't have a monitor and they didn't know the routes. I mean, that's already happened once and it's only been, what, I mean, two weeks, uh, or so? I'm not sure what today's date is.
I'm not sure who Metro is.
Metro is the state, uh, first student. So when they don't have drivers, they have to get drivers from Metro to come in to fill in. And that's already happened once because it was a short, they were short of driver. And, uh, the Metro driver refused to come because he didn't know the roads and he has no monitor to tell him the route. So they had no driver. So, uh, who's the boss at first? Who is it? Megan? Is that her name? Nobody knows? Is it Megan? Megan, Megan had to drive the route herself. So if two people had called on that day, you would have had no driver because there was no one else. So like, what's the plan in the future if this continues to happen?
Well, I guess I would, I would ask what the other districts that don't have monitors do when that happens. Places like Cranston and Providence, the numbers of drivers that they have out on a daily basis, they must have a system. So I'll reach out to those communities and find out what their.
Because I would, because I mean, you know, if you don't prepare ahead of time, you know, that's potentially could happen and then, and then what? You know, you're stuck. What else we got? So I, I have a question. This might not be a question for you. This might be for the union. They have to pay their union dues, these monitors. Now, you're responsible for paying the dues out of their paycheck, right? The town is?
I think staff don't.
Pretty sure I saw that in the contract.
Deduction. Yeah, it's, it's a part of a payroll deduction.
Right, but the money comes from you guys.
We, yes, it's, it's, it's deducted from their paycheck.
Right, and it goes from the town to the union.
Exactly.
Now that, now that the hours are cut in half, are there dues going to be cut in half?
Well, that's a question for the union.
You have no idea. Okay, excellent. All right. I, you know what? I'm gonna, I might have to come back with some other questions on these monitors. But I gotta ask some of the topics I want to discuss. So recently I also had a complaint about the gate behind North Citu Elementary. Yeah, I know you guys, at the last meeting, you took a vote to ask the council for permission to keep it open.
So historically, like the Hope Elementary School, there's always been like a stop and drop with a greeter there. And prior to, I think it was Mr., is it Whitford, Whitford? Who used to own the apartment complex there? Anyway, he sold and it, and then the new owner didn't want the parents turning around and for like, you know, forty years, it was never a problem. So now it's, there's going to be an amendment to the, to the, to the.
Town ordinance.
The town ordinance. Thank you, Colleen. Just to allow the gate to be opened for twenty minutes a day. They don't need it in the afternoon. It's just a day in the morning so parents can continue to do the drop, greet and drop and then move on. They've been doing for forty years.
The entire day just for a short period of time.
No, it's only twenty minutes a day if the council approves it. It's not approved yet. That's what a request is.
Exactly. It's not approved yet, but you took a vote to send it to the council for approval.
Correct.
And there's a town ordinance that says that gate is not to be opened due to a safety reason, right?
I don't know if it's safety. It's not really a.
Is there a town ordinance that the gate is to stay closed? Because if there isn't, you would just open it. Why would you get a council approval?
Believe me, the, the police chief called me last week.
Yeah, I know because, yeah, I know because.
Bit closed.
But it was opened. Who opened it?
Well, it was opened. It's been opened since COVID.
It's against, it's against town law. It's against town ordinances to open that gate.
Yeah.
Right. And it was open. I know it was open because I got called and I went and looked and it was open.
It's been opened for three or four years. We're trying to get it now harder.
So you've been violating, that it's a hundred dollar a day fine to open that gate? You've been, you just admitted that you've, you've been opening it for three, four years. I don't, I've looked up the ordinance.
The school department opened it for three because of COVID and some of the safety issues. And it really, no one brought it to our attention that it was a problem. But when it became a problem for somebody on the street, we closed it and now it's going to the.
Did you ever get permission from the, to open in the first place from the council?
I don't know.
I can't remember what happened during that COVID and everybody's just trying to, to keep.
I understand that. I understand that.
Why is there a problem with it?
Well, I've got a complaint from a parent that it was open and they felt safe. That's, you know, so that's why I'm here. And I know it was open because I went and checked it and it was open. And then I've already talked to a councilman who told me that that's how I went and looked up the law. There's an ordinance with a hundred dollar a day fine that you're not to open it. So I'd like to know who made the command decision to open it when you just took a vote to get council approval to open it, which hasn't happened yet because I watched all the council meetings. It hasn't been on our agenda yet. So who opened it and violated that, that ordinance? It would be the superintendent. She makes the decisions, correct?
What was the date that you're saying that it was, what, what day were you there?
I don't remember the exact date.
Was it like last week?
Yeah. I'll, I'll make a call to the police chief and I'll get confirmation from him. But all right, I'm gonna have to come back on that too. The other thing is too, is another complaint from a parent, apparently seventeen year old, I think, I think he was, I'm not sure about the age. Assaulted two females on school property.
We can't, we can't discuss.
Right. Is it what, I, I know you can't discuss. I just want to know, was there a police report? Was a police report taken? It must have been, right?
Excuse me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn this over to our attorney.
School committee doesn't have to answer questions related to that.
Okay. All right. You can't even just say that there was a report?
No.
See, and that's the problem. That's why people send me here because you guys aren't very forthcoming, you know? The whole, this is my, like, it seems like you think that she can just make any decision she wants, keep the police department on of it. And, you know, it's like the whole teacher's aide smoking crack again and not doing anything about it situation, you know? And, and that's why parents are getting upset and they're calling me and then I have to come here and I've got to bust chops about it. I don't want to have to do that. Frankly, I don't even want to be here. You know what I mean? But, you know, nobody, nobody wants to do it. So I get all these calls from all these people about what a terrible job that she's doing and you just don't seem to care. Now, you can say that the whole teacher's aide thing didn't happen. I know it happened. Okay? We all know it happened. You covered it up. I don't know if it was because she's friends with someone. I don't know if it's because of the election. I'm not going to say her name. I'm not going to say her name. I'm not going to get myself in trouble. But I know that you know what I'm talking about.
No, I'm talking, I don't.
You know exactly what I'm talking about and I can prove that one of you on the stage right now knew the whole time when you. Do you think Al Duran showed up at that meeting and asked about sex and drugs in the middle school for no reason? No, I sent him there. I sent him there because if I walked in, you know why I was there.
So do you have another question or a specific comment?
Yeah, you're, you're, you're borderline endangering children and you don't seem to care and it's weird. And people aren't happy about it and I think you need to realize that. I think you need to do something about this because you're going to get the town involved in a lawsuit. That's what's eventually going to happen. I mean, you can't just put a woman back in a classroom who admits to smoking crack and not at least get her rehabilitation. I mean, that's insane.
So again, do, do you have another question or specific comment that you'd like to? The school committee under the statute can limit public comment. Is there another specific question or?
When did you, when did you pass that? The town council passed that at council meetings? There's a time limit now? All right, fine. I don't have another question. I'll just have a statement. That whole situation isn't over. I know you denied the report. We went to the Attorney General. They sided with you. But of course we talked to our lawyer and we're going to refile it because we're going to, we're going to do this on different. And eventually, you know, I'm gonna get that report. And even if I don't, I am going to come back and we're going to have this discussion again because now you cut me off. And I don't think it's right. I don't think that's right at all. This is children's safety that we're talking about. There should be no time limit. But when I do come back with the report or not with the report, I am going to show you how I know one of you knew about it. One of you guys knew about it the whole time and I can prove that. I don't need the report. I don't really need the report. No, yeah, we're talking about the aid. Yeah. And you said that no report existed. I, you know, I got the proof the report existed from the police station when we asked for it. And you said at the meeting to Al Duran, no report existed. It, it does.
And you have proof that I knew a report existed?
If you don't, if you didn't know a report existed, then you guys aren't doing your job.
But, I, enough.
But.
I think it's enough. You've stood here and belittled us superintendent and every member of this committee. If you feel that way, I am very sorry you feel that way, but I can guarantee you, I've been doing this for ten years. And every decision I have ever made is for the benefit and safety of children.
Yep.
Of my own, which have been through this school.
You guys, you guys left an admitted crack smoker in the classroom and then transferred them to Clavo when we exposed it. That's what you did. Yeah. Yeah. And that, and they lasted a day. Yeah, because the parents found out about it, didn't they? Carolyn, you know exactly what I'm talking about. Okay, I'm sure I'll see you guys again. You have a nice day.
Hi, my name is Jean Farah, seventeen Red Cedar Road. I've never done this before, so bear with me. I'm a retired school bus driver for Citu. I started out with Collins Company. And I, I have one question and then I have some statements to make. But is, is there a, on the special needs buses, is there an afternoon?
Yeah, all special needs buses have.
Okay, that remains the same.
Absolutely.
Lost my train of thought. Monitors are very important. I've driven, I've driven your children, your children. And I had to cover a route one afternoon for high school. And I started out with saying to the students on the bus, I need someone to help me to negotiate the route. Do I have anybody that would come and sit up front? And nobody wanted to. So I had no monitor. I'm trying to do what I can. I'm asking for help and they're not giving it. And one student thought he was, you know, hot shot and just let me go by his house and say, oh, wait a minute, that's my stop back there. Well, my answer to him back then, when it was Collins, now you can get off the bus and you can walk back. And I just feel that it's very important that monitors are, you know, aboard, onboard in the afternoon. And the thing is with people that are, are trying to make a living, it could be a supplement to their social security. No one's going to come, want to come in on, in two, for two hours in the morning and not have anything in the afternoon. And it's, to me, it's a safety issue. I'd done it for twenty-two years. I drove like the, the big bus first and then I went on to special needs. I loved my job. I just couldn't do it anymore. So I, that was my comment and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Jean. Do we have anybody else that would like to make a public comment? Chris, is there anybody at home that would like to make a public comment? Please raise your hand up. There's some. Hello, Bianca. Could you state your name and your address?
Yes, Bianca Mancini, six six five Opernis Road. Hope you all are well. Any idea when we can expect some sort of update or comment on Cato?
Something will be coming out tomorrow.
Oh, you made my night. Okay. That's all I need. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments? Okay. If there's no further comments, we will move on to new business on the agenda.
Help me make a motion.
Yes, can I have a, a motion for discussion number one?
Like a motion to approve the settlement with Rhode Island Department of Health regarding North Citu Elementary drinking water. Do I have to say that?
No, that's fine. Do I have a second? Is there a discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion for a vote on the non-renewal of teachers?
Make a motion to accept the non-renewal of teachers as presented by the superintendent.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, do we have any announcements? Because immediately following the announcements, we are moving into the budget workshop. Set it. Okay, I'd like to turn the meeting over to, to Stephanie and to our superintendent. Stephanie is going to walk us through not only the current year budget and where we stand, but also the, also the FY twenty-five draft budget. Bye, Walter. Bye, Nettie. Yes.
Just want Chris to be able to pull it up.
We're going to just hold tight while Chris gets the budget up onto the screen. Yeah, I think we have the budget in front of us. I know people at home might want to see it, but maybe you could just start off talking a little bit about some of the revenues and then we'll put the revenues up when Chris gets back. Okay, so you can start with your talking points.
I did want to just do a quick overview of our current status and projected fifteen month year end because it's directly aligned with our needs for our current budget. So when Chris does pull it up, you'll see him start at the beginning. We're going to go to the end quickly and then we're going to go right back to the beginning again to talk about the current budget. Lots of hefty nuggets tonight. So starting with revenue. In the twelve months, we did get less Medicaid than budgeted and in the extra three months, we got less Medicaid than budgeted. So you'll see that. It totaled forty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars less. The first, the first page, sorry.
Under Medicaid, third line down.
But you had to get all the columns. Yes, I had to get all the columns. We received a hundred and seventy thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars more in tuitions than budgeted, which was great. In the total fifteen months, we have projected forty-seven students and actually had fifty-five, so eight more than projected. We received one time a hundred and two thousand nine hundred and two dollars in transitional aid as a part of our state aid that gave us extra revenue of twenty-one thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars in the total fifteen month budget from what was originally budgeted. Our revenue over the fifteen months is projected to be a hundred and forty-six thousand one hundred and two dollars higher than budgeted. And I think Chris is going to pull it up now. And that's primarily due to CTE, correct?
And that transition.
And that transitional.
That one time.
That, so that's never coming back. Never coming back.
You're good, Chris.
Right.
And just a quick overview of the expenses from our fifteen month projection before we focus on the draft budget. You'll see some grade out areas and that's because we're aligning to new Yuccoas in the salary lines with our wonderful new accountant. He is rolling out some of what is usually rolled up into our salary line. So we can really see where we're having those expenditures. So you'll see now we have vacation, PTO and holiday time and that will be broken out. This is why you'll see less expense in the salary line and an expense to the prior mentioned lines for the amount of the surplus in the salary line. So it's all still, we were on target, but it's just broken up differently.
And moving forward, we'll be that way.
Exactly. So that way we can really narrow down and I can answer questions better when it comes to.
Project, exactly.
Right. Contractual PD days were shifted to April at the start of the fifteen month budget. So we did have two PD days in April and then we will have two PD days again now in April. And that had to be accounted for in this budget. So you will see that that was, we didn't budget the correct amount there. A hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars over budget because it was a, a hit four times in the fifteen month budget. We had a savings in the buyback line in the twelve months with an increase in the healthcare and dental line in the twelve months as we had more planned subscribers. So obviously one offsets the other. And the benefits, if, oh, you might have to go to the next.
Next page.
Next page.
Sorry.
In the purchase and professional services, we had increased costs in other services and legal.
Next page.
Sorry. I'll try to start with next page and legal services.
I did tell her to try to move through the. Got so much to talk to about next year.
Due to the need for consultants and legal services, data processing and management reflects ADP costs and workflow, workforce now. Our plan is to move to Tyler for payroll moving forward for a shift to lower costs and streamlining processes.
Turn the page.
In other technical services line, it's in the red as a product of Power School prices steadily increasing and several of their separate products renewing in the same fifteen month timeframe. Along with an offset in the other supplies line where miscellaneous items were previously charged in our supplies grouping and is now separated more efficiently by Yucca. So throughout the budget to actual, when you really can take time to dig into it, you can see some offsets where there were. Um, so throughout the budget to actual, when you really can take time to dig into it, you can see some offsets where there were um over expenditures and then surpluses in other lines as we're still adjusting some areas in Yukola.
Most of those are all falling within the same. Trying to keep up, most of those um variances are all falling within the same category. So with the bottom line is pretty much remaining the same, it's just the difference.
In other purchase services, I wanted to highlight the increase in tuitions to private sources. Um, we have uh one student at Mount Pleasant, one in Tveris, one in Ocean State and a student that was in La Perch that is returning to the district. Um, lot expenses in the actual budget for FY twenty-five will be shifting to other budgeted lines with that return, so I wanted to point that out. Um, other purchase services and it is the tuition of private sources.
Fifty-five, six thirty.
Thank you.
So a hundred and eighteen thousand one is student alone in that one.
And it's gonna, yeah.
And we got, we got it offset by electricity.
Right.
And this is for non, uh, uh, they, they're broken, this is non-special needs, correct?
And then the tuition to ed services was lower in the twelve months, you'll notice it's in that same segment, then projected due to one student leaving an ed service agent, agency, however, that increase is set to reinstate in the next three months.
Can I just, can I just say one thing to the committee? If you just look at the tuitions for the, you know, private schools for, for children with disabilities. Look what we spent in FY twenty-three, sixty-three thousand. And look what we're spending in a twelve-month period. You know, it's, it's just, it's two hundred. I'm right here, tuitions to private sources. This is how much we spent. In FY twenty-three, sixty-three thousand.
Yep.
If you go across the line, you can see how it's just.
And the Northwest Consortium has also let us know that there's increase in pricing for all of these um ed services. And we have an additional student.
See, we spent sixty-three here.
Yep.
If you go straight across.
And again, these are lines that are really unpredictable.
I'm sorry, so I asked, did that include that the?
The budgeted, yes. And then if we move to the last page, you will see we're ending the twelve-month of the fiscal year with a surplus that is offset by a projected deficit in the three-month remaining portion of the fifteen-month budget. Trending towards a small projected deficit of ten thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars. Obviously, we're gonna work to offset that by watching the budget closely, monitoring any and all activity we can to accommodate and offset it. I just wanted to let you know where I see us landing so that we can talk about where we need to be moving forward. So if you don't mind starting all the way at the beginning again. Um, so moving into the draft budget. Total state aid twelve-month appropriation is three million eight hundred twenty thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars. Total FY twenty-twenty-five recommended state aid is three million six hundred thirteen thousand nine hundred thirty-four dol- thirty-four dollars. And that is two hundred six thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars less this year based on the twelve-month appropriation. Um, and that is just recommended, so there will be further cuts um on the horizon before it's enacted. Uh, this is.
Just to reiterate, we're down two hundred and seven.
To start, before we do anything.
In state aid.
And you said further cuts are coming?
Right, so this, that's just the recommended aid. Um, and she did say that, um, she didn't tell me how much, uh, when I spoke to Ry, but they did say they expect a, a cut.
Yeah, they expect the book, the governor's budget to get cut, so.
We're practically not even funded by the state at this point. Yet they put unfunded mandates on us, just saying out loud.
Yep. Medicaid projected revenue is also down by forty-eight thousand sixty-nine dollars. Uh, so that's a total decrease in revenue of two hundred fifty-four thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars.
So the Medicaid revenue is, that's obviously a fill for certain reimbursements for certain. So with that being down, are, are there a certain student population that we're no longer serving? Are there costs that are gonna go down related to that? Does that make sense? I'm, I'm just talking about the Medicaid being down.
I don't think they're billing. I don't think they're doing the billing. I think there needs to be training. I think, go ahead.
Yeah, so I did talk to uh Northwest about this and I kinda said, you know, what's going on? Cause I'm noticing a trend that I don't like. And um she's gave me a breakdown, which I can also share with you guys. I could come back with that next uh month if you'd like. Of all the different ways Medicaid money comes in and the different pieces they look at and some of it is the way that they are you know, putting the data entry in, I don't know enough about it, but of what they're doing. So we need to be sure that they're reporting the, and the things that they are doing so we can get reimbursed for them. And they said that they were gonna begin an audit of that um internally with Northwest to en- ensure that all of that was being done. Um, so I can check in with them and come back with a little more.
And I don't, I don't need the whole breakdown, but it just, I'm looking at it from a broad view, so. For Medicaid funding, it's generally speaking for special education students, that's where it's coming from. So if there is a significant reduction in the aid that we're receiving, you would think that there's a significant reduction in the services that we're providing, but that doesn't seem to be the case. So if we're serving the same population, roughly thereabout, right, or there's no major changes.
You're, you're absolutely right, Colleen. That's what you would think. We're gonna do a deep dive into that. I just received updated caseloads and schedules for OT and PT today. And chatted with them before we met, so we're looking at those things because logically you would.
That's all I'm using is logic.
Logically, you would think that's right.
To what they reimburse for or what they, and I.
Yeah, so we, we are gonna look at all of that and make sure that our um service providers are adequately trained around um filling out the forms to get maximum reimbursement additionally.
The revenue number for CTE incoming is a conservative projection of ten additional students from our district on top of our remaining fifty-five incoming after aging everyone out. And by that, I mean twelfth graders.
Oh, tuitions?
Yeah, sorry, I should've said turn the page.
Oh, you, oh, we're turning the page?
Yep, we're on the, we're on the right page, sorry. Get myself confused.
You, you accounted for our graduating seniors that are CTE. Um, and then we're adding an additional ten. How many CTEs do we have seniors right now? Do, and if you don't know, it's.
Yeah, it's, I didn't bring that, sorry.
When we come up with a PowerPoint, it's gonna have all the.
I'm just wanting like.
The charts in it, yeah.
Very comfortable with that number.
Yeah, tennis conservative.
Okay, yes, I'm, and I, we didn't do that.
We went over all the numbers.
Okay.
She showed me with me and Lori.
And I don't.
Yeah.
Trust you, it was us that we were.
Plus she went bill.
Just trying to like. Close a hole.
Yeah, we, we decided to be a little conservative um just based on the um students that have applied and been accepted. We think that there are additional students that have applied, but they have not been processed, they have not been accepted. We did not add those students into these figures.
You don't know if these people will show up.
Correct. Otherwise, we will um be counting on revenue that may not be.
Trying to be cautious, absolutely.
We do have thirty-seven outgoing to other districts and three going to charter schools with costs totaling seven hundred thirty-eight thousand five hundred and twelve dollars. CTE only costing the six hundred ninety thousand eight hundred fifty-seven. I don't mean only, I'm just breaking it out. And charter forty-seven thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars, just so you can see the breakout. Total projected revenue, eight hundred and forty thousand seven hundred and seventy. And the cost to the district, seven hundred thirty-five thousand five hundred and twelve dollars, so the variance when you look at it like that is a hundred and five thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. I just wanted you to see incoming, outgoing, it matters. Um, and the, that revenue will assist in a partial offset to our state aid shortfall, shortfall. Um, but it looks a lot less when you do it in-going, incoming and outgoing.
I think one of the most important numbers on that line though is the number one line, and that's what we're gonna be asking the town for is six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars.
Okay, so the budget, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say that six hundred plus thousand is more than a two percent tax increase.
I don't know about a tax increase.
I don't really care what it is. They should've given us the money last year, so.
Didn't mean to poke the bear, I'm just, I'm just making a comment of it's, it's a little over two percent tax increase for the town without the town spending money on anything else. They just want us to be aware of that. Just, it just, just a.
So I wanna focus on what the schools need and I feel for the town, but at the end of the day, they did not give us the appropriation we asked for and instead we got a one-time funding cliff. And it took us one point, you know, several years to get out of the last funding cliff and they created another one last year. With that said though, Erica, we're only asking for a three point three.
Three point one.
Three point one percent increase. And if you go to all these other departments, they're asking for a three percent as well. So when you look at it, that, it's, it's.
I'm, I'm not arguing with you.
No, no, I, I just wanted to just, I hear what you're saying, but this is what we need, but more importantly, it's only a three percent increase to ours and even though it translates into what the total need is for, for tax increase. We're not out of line compared to what everyone else is asking in all of the other departments. And every year, if we go back and I'm probably gonna do like an analysis for us or for that committee, we have been staying significantly below that three percent while other departments were getting close to that. So this is the first time we've actually come up and asked for a three percent increase in a while. So, but it's gonna be big because we're the eight-hundred-pound gorilla, right?
And if. Turn that into like a colorful chart.
But and I, and I know that you're not, you're not saying anything, uh, you know, that you're not supporting this. It's just we, you're giving us a reality check that this is gonna be a big ask. And I, I appreciate that. I get it.
So the budget does represent a three point one four percent increase over last year's local appropriation, which totals six hundred eighty-two thousand ninety-six dollars. Um, if we wanna go to the salary section. Talk a little bit about that. The salary line includes a three percent turnover breakage rate. Uh, that amount is four hundred sixty thousand three hundred sixty-nine dollars. To speak to the six hundred eighty-two thousand ninety-six dollars um of the increase, it can be primarily attributed to three hundred fifty-two thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars for two point five percent contractual increases in certified staff steps of two hundred twenty thousand seven hundred forty dollars. Uh, forty-one teachers alone moved up in steps this year. We have monitors, paras, custodians, all on steps. Um, without even touching on additional arising costs that are impacting our budget specifically as we started talking about and dive into a little bit more social emotional recovery costs.
Those two numbers, colas, two point and have two and a half percent. And just the step increases. Five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Five hundred and seventy-two thousand. On those two issues. And we kept our colas down, right?
Yeah, yes.
Thank God we did. So, keep going.
The budget is also inclusive of a proposal of the Director of Curriculum to replace the Director of Technology. There are two new positions previously supported by Essar Funds, the Math Interventionalists and a Social Worker. In this proposed budget that would replace two positions being reduced, not yet identified. This decision would be made once scheduling is complete and a final count of students entering preschool is finalized. We do not intend to increase the total amount of FTEs.
So, but you just said you were planning to.
We're looking at adding two positions.
And taking two away. And this two, the two that we may be taking away have not been identified yet until budgeting is done.
Well, not so much that we don't know what the scheduling is.
I didn't mean budgeting, I meant scheduling.
Yeah.
Scheduling and kindergarten registration. Cause I gave you those numbers tonight, but we're watching those because.
They might change.
Yeah.
So the Math Interventionalist and the Social Worker, where would that be? Um, where, where are those being added to?
The top line, but it's.
No, with, where within the.
Oh, oh, in the organization?
Yeah.
The Math Interventionalists um will be at the elementary uh level and the Social Worker will also be at the elementary level.
There isn't one now at the elementary.
Correct, and I actually.
Know what?
Social Worker, well, there is, based on Essar funding. That, that position is um funded through Essar currently.
How many social workers are in the district?
One and then one on Essar.
Right, two total, one local, one on Essar.
And the one that's on local is for the, for the uh middle and high school. There's nothing. That support will be gone if we don't keep it going in the elementarys.
There was, but before Essar, there, there was a social worker that would service.
One for the district. You had one for the district. They covered all the buildings.
So on the non-renewals, I saw two social workers listed.
You should've seen, oh, because one is a one-year um only, I believe. I'll have to look at the list again, Colleen. We non-renew, non-tenured uh people and the lowest person in an area, if that area has not had one person non-renewed. I know it sounds confusing.
I would think that, and I'm just, if someone is, was Essar-funded, we would not be giving them a non-renew.
Yes, we have to non-renew cause they're grant-funded, so we put them, we put them on that list, just.
Even though they're only. Okay, I just wasn't, so one of those, and it's not about the people, it's about the positions.
Right, right, right. It's just a matter of making sure that the district is, is protected.
And what do we have for Math Interventionalists in the elementary school now?
We have. No, we have uh more than that. Um, we have point five at Clayville. I think we have point five at Hope, let me pull the.
I thought we had. North Situate as well.
We did have the E.
I did this chart and I also, I can share it with the full committee. It lists all those positions exactly where they are in the FTE. Just for budget purposes, so.
I just, and I'm not trying to pick up off the budget. From the beginning, when Essar funds came out to be, and I've been saying this all along, Essar funds were one-time funds with a limited place to be and we had to be very cognizant of that. Moving forward, I know we talked about the Curriculum Director being offset by a Director of Technology. I also know we spoke at one of the last meetings about um our Scene Coordinator, which used to be a fo- a full-time position, kind of broken down. So I, I, I get we wanna retain what we can, but I just wanna make sure that.
I just worry about, about the grouping together, it's not black and white. Like, because something was funded by Essar, doesn't mean it has to go away. Because with Essar, we were able to bring resources on and then we started to see with those resources which are really effective. And you don't wanna abandon them, but in order to keep them, you've gotta take some other priority off. So is it rising up to maintain this effective resource versus having these other resources there that are not as effective? And that's why it's written, our FTEs are not going up. We're gonna put these two higher priority FTEs in if they can defend it and take two out. If not, then we won't rehire these two. I, it, it's, I guess what I'm saying is we're not adding and adding and adding Essar. Previous.
To, like, we're getting millions of dollars that we were only getting for a period of time.
And we, and we're gonna keep these one, two, three, but what's coming out of one, two, three, because we can't just pile that back into the budget. That makes sense?
That's kinda my, Lori, don't, I'm good for now.
I have it.
Okay.
So.
Don't you have like a little thing that you can just turn them on and off for us?
Like, no, you should just get one of those collars.
You, you wanted the Math Interventionalist. Clayville has a point five Math Interventionist, North Situate has a one point oh, Hope has point five. There's one at the middle school and one at the high school.
And one of those is going away if we don't. And that's the.
I'm sorry, point five Clayville?
Point five Hope. One, one point oh North Situate. One, one point oh middle school, one point oh high school.
And one of them is coming out. If we don't fund it.
We have two. We have two Social Workers in the district currently. If we don't, um, fund that second one, we will have one for the district covering all of the schools.
I knew at one point, and this may have actually been before your time here, and it may have exchanged since then, we had reduced our Social Worker hours, I think below point one at one point. But we had added hours in for school psychologists.
Okay, you, you currently have, uh, one, uh, two point five school psychologists. Each elementary school has a halftime point five. Um, the middle school has point four and the high school has point six. So you have one point O in this building.
Yep.
And a halftime at each one of the elementary schools.
The one point five at the elementary.
Yep.
Okay.
The, the issue, I, I'll tell you in the point and trying to marry those positions and then get a one point O, is by the, if, if they are traveling between elementary schools, by the time you take lunch, um, unassigned, their prep period and their travel time, they're really only working with kids like an hour and a half, two hours.
And most of them are writing, writing, writing plans.
You lose, you lose too much time, because they're traveling.
Does a great and powerful Aussie have any data to show the benefits of the Math Interventionist so that we can highlight how, how-
She's the one who put them forward.
So that, does she, is it something that we can present to the town council, say, look, the, look what the difference is?
Absolutely, she can put that data together for you. Um, I also pulled the, um, recommendations for caseloads, uh, for school social workers, because I was curious, like, you know, given our small population, um, in Rhode Island, um, right now, there is one Social Worker for every six hundred and eighty-six kids. Um, the recommended ratio for, um, school social workers from the national organization is one for every two hundred and fifty kids. I'm just telling you what the national recommendation is. For school psychologists, it's a, a ratio of five hundred to one.
Also, also good information.
I'm like, you know, where do we fall as around staffing?
Yep, yep.
Are we, do we look like we're in the ballpark? Or I think with two psych, Social Workers, district-wide, you're in the ballpark. That, that's where you need to be, um, particularly with kids, kids are looking very different after COVID. Um, you can talk to your principals, things that they are dealing with. It's everywhere. It's, and it's not just Rhode Island, it is around the nation. Kids are, and families are struggling.
So if we have, if you have that data readily available, again, uh, is it useful to put it on our slide decks? And because we come up with a really great slide deck that, that we present, you know?
Having done the PowerPoint.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that for the, um-
The other thing, I think it's gonna be important, I talked to Stephanie, you see you have the twelve-month projection, and then you got the three months. I think we need to do apples to apples, like the twelve months needs to be twelve one to six thirty this year to twelve, to the twelve month this year. That's all, the, the quarters are all different.
We're never satisfied. You didn't give us enough information last time, right? No, I, I gather, it's a struggle. No, and we appreciate it, it's just try, she hasn't quit yet.
I know.
We do appreciate you, no, not too much.
I mean, we can deduct the, the information, but we do have to pile through it.
Right, I think it's though, we're gonna show a twelve-month timeframe from July to June.
Never mind.
Do we feel okay to move to benefits?
Yes. Anybody have any questions on anything else on the benefits?
Um, overall benefits increased, are, are increases due to salary costs, obviously. Health costs did increase by three percent. Um, Certified TIAA went down from, uh, twelve, sorry, from fourteen point two eight percent to twelve point four two percent. Certified Retirement went down to fourteen point four four percent from fifteen point oh three percent. Um, Survivor Benefits, I, I just wanted to remind everybody, that's a hundred and fifty total per person. Non-CRT doesn't receive it. I know everybody always asks what Survivor Benefit, so, uh, what's that cost?
I think that's gonna be confusing that you're see- But just seeing the rate of, um, you're seeing the rate dropping significantly for the retirement programs, Teachers Retirement, Mercer, and MERS, I mean. And, uh-
Oh my God, that microphone's got me all screwed up.
Benefits are pretty straightforward.
But the problem is, is you're not seeing a surplus because of the increases in the steps and colas, and the retirement is just a percentage of all of that. So it would have been significantly higher, actually.
Any questions on benefits? Purchased and professional services.
So can we go back for what, just one, I'm sorry, I wanted to ask last time. Um, sick ta, uh, no. Sick leave bonus, fifty-two thousand dollars.
So, uh, that was the the, that's the contractual sick leave for the certified staff that we paid out this year. So in previous years, we hadn't paid, we hadn't had to pay it out. Um, that's why I believe it wasn't budgeted in this, this, and we are going to be budgeting moving forwards if it doesn't happen again.
What was, what was the change?
Um, they moved the days, the amount of days shifted in this contract from seven to four.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, there was no part two, just, it went from seven to four.
I, I'm sorry, got you, got you. So it went from seven once, explain that to me.
Days.
Days, they got paid at, for seven, after seven days, and then it was they got paid after four days. So that, um, meant that a lot more people were eligible for a lot more money.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Get into that, right?
I'm sorry to make you go.
So in purchased and professional services, um, this is where we can talk a little bit about the social emotional needs and how high they are. Um, ABC Di- Diagnosticians increased um, in the budget per request of building administrators to address social emotional needs of students. This line is projected to be overspent in the current year by a hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred five dollars, but it'll be offset by, um, one-time federal dollars. So again, we won't have that next year. Um, we need to recoup and prepare for that. Um, that's why you'll see the budget is higher.
So between the cola, steps,
Tuitions.
Uh, you'll also see another new line, the Rise As, I'm probably saying that wrong, I apologize. Um, it's a new Yoko addition for the Student Assistant Programming. So you'll see a budget for that as well this year. Virtual classrooms, web-based supplemental instructional programming and curriculum development is reflecting curriculum needs to build back our rooted base in curriculum that was moved to Esser three. It needs to come back to the general fund. It's our highest priority. I do have specifics, I can, uh, give a couple examples, just so you're not bored by them, um, but uh, some of the items that we're using for curriculum, American Reading will be thirty-eight thousand, Lexia, ten thousand six hundred dollars. Agile Minds, thirty-seven thousand nine hundred forty-two dollars, Alex, fifteen thousand six hundred dollars, just so you can see, um, there's plenty more, but they add up. Um, and that does need to come back onto our base in general fund. Other services increased to reflect unbudgeted capital stage designs that need to be in our base. Data processing and management reflects ADP costs and workforce now, workforce now, as well as a lowering cost of E-rate. Other, so that's why you'll see the difference if you're looking through that whole line. Other technical services consist of rising prices in Power School, which we talked about in the Budget to Actual. Um, IQ, School Spring. And the, and then there was that offset by other supplies line where the miscellaneous items were previously charged in the Supplies Grouping. We talked about that in the Budget to Actual. Other charges consists of court costs, filing fees, commissions, and non-employee stipends. I just wanted to mention that because everybody always asks me, what's other charges? Catering food reimbursement line was increased in this budget to accommodate any ask. Any questions on the purchased and professional services on the surface right now? Absolutely. All right, we'll move to property services. Um, as we remember, last year, uh, we lowered the base in our maintenance lines to accommodate for other priorities and work towards moving some maintenance keep-up in-house. This year, we are proposing to restore the base as costs of materials are going up. The prevailing wage for contracts we have are going up and maintenance needs continue to increase and be out of scope without outsourcing. And again, in this line, you can see even from, um, this current year, the offset of the Yoko shift, some lines, um, had to be moved to other areas. I feel like property services is pretty straightforward, but let me know if you have any questions. Okay, we'll move on to other purchased property services. We have cut one bus and we will see the full fruition of these savings in FY twenty twenty-five of around seventy-four thousand ninety-three dollars, and you can see that, um, in the budget proposal. There is a ten thousand dollar increase in advertising costs to continue to administer our TMS marketing solutions. Obviously, we can see with our CT students coming in how important and imperative that is, uh, to continue that advertising base in our budget. With the extensive rise in social emotional needs, we have three students outgoing to private source, sources. We pay tuition for and two students outgoing to ed service agencies. We pay tuition services for, there's gonna be a third, um, totaling three hundred sixty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars.
So you, you've utilized, like, you're projecting forward of what is going to-
We have accounted for every student that we currently have and know of.
Right, that may be coming to-
Yes, everyone we know of and, and that we have already.
Which again, in our district is, in any district, but with such a small budget, like one child.
One or two students move in, and it, um, has a tremendous impact on our budget.
If you guys go back to what we spent in, in twenty twenty-three, it was eight hundred and twenty-four thousand five. If you go back to FY twenty-three, um, it was eight hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. It's now six hundred and ninety, so it's actually, we're, we're retaining students, we're, they're staying compared to previous years.
Yeah, we, we are trying, um.
If you guys are okay, we can move to Supplies. Projected savings in oil with a new provider honoring the state MPA price, although price is variable in a control month that, uh, me and Jay looked at together. We've saved sixty-eight cents per gallon. Custodial Supplies pricing is continually going up, we know that. Um, I did want to mention the subscriptions and periodicals have some curricular needs that need to be moved into our base from Esser three, that's why we're seeing the change in that line, and that's where you call-
Where they before?
In Esser three.
No, but before Esser three.
Um, Yoko places them there, they might have just been in, in a wrong Yoko.
I'm sorry, I, I was trying to-
The, the subscriptions and periodicals that were curriculum-based.
Talking about good housekeeping here. You see periodicals, right?
Yes, no, no. And, I'm sorry. And the web-based software and database, um, increase is also, uh, due to new regulations regarding school safety, software, cyber awareness and protection, which I'm learning a lot about.
So again, um-
You know, new regs requiring this money needs to be like, footnoted. I know it's a forty thousand dollar thing, but still.
Good point.
Without funding from the state. Car General.
I, nobody could finish their major comment.
If we want to move to equipment, um, the equipment increases, um, reflect the steam requests from, uh, the building administrators, um, some special ed instructional equipment that, um, we will need, um, that we've been made aware of, along with the traditional athletic equipment as, uh, you know, lifecycle changes.
That's under regular equipment stuff, athletic as well?
Yep. Uh, hardware technology was increased due to our technology plan timeline and the need for ninth-grade Chromebooks. Overall, I'm just gonna, uh, repeat that it's a three point one percent increase in our local appropriation totaling six hundred eighty-two thousand ninety-six dollars. Um, to, it offset the reductions in revenue and the increases described in our analysis, um, in front of you.
So, I can't the red and the, and the jock's blue.
Sorry.
What is that last number?
Where are we?
Nine, three, six.
Nine, three, six, eight, nine, seven.
Eight, nine, seven, is that's how much more we're spending.
Than twenty-four.
And what is the net amount if we take all the revenue? How does that, how does? So we're spending, we're raising twenty-six, nine, and we're, okay, so it's a zero. So the total expenditures are the same as the total revenue. So this is, this is a zero budget.
Right.
You know.
What are you, I-
Okay, so if you look at the last number on FY twenty-five proposed budget, it's twenty-six, nine.
Yep.
If you go up and look at your twenty-five proposed revenue, it's twenty-six, nine.
So what about this other number here?
That's just telling you the difference between that number and the fifteen-month budget.
So that really doesn't mean anything.
No.
Because it's a fifteen-month.
Yeah.
Is that-
That's why what the next one you'll see is gonna be the twelve to the twelve, the same month.
Is that a lot more work for you to do, so? Twelve to fifteen to twelve?
She's already sliced.
No, I, I just-
It really does need to happen, though. It's, it, you gotta push apples to apples in July to June, you gotta July to June.
Presenting our budget.
Yeah.
It's hard enough for us to understand, but-
I know, I'm throwing a lot of information at you.
Not, it's not that, it's just, it's confusing because of the three, the twelve, and what, what's three?
Done, this is the one and done, I promise, this will be, right? And you could use all the nuggets you want, everything.
I've been making up promises for a while. We do need, though, before we break up, if somebody doesn't have any questions, we do need to figure out when is our next meeting, because the, uh, the, the town wants the budget sooner versus later. So, is that correct? So while we are all here, do you want to take a look at, when are you going? What's your date?
High in the way the week of April vacation.
And what are those dates, Colleen?
Fifteenth to the twenty-first.
Yep.
So the fifteenth to the twenty-first. And when is it due? So we have the, um, when is it due to the town?
If you need to meet in my absence, I, I will ask any question. I get it, but I, I have and I have access to a superintendent and to Stephanie to ask any questions.
Okay.
I just gave myself access to you guys, I hope.
We have that town-
It won't be the week of April vacation, I promise.
We have the town budget meeting the eighteenth. Oh, yeah, so you guys-
You want us, um, there's no other meeting after that? We're the last ones.
Then again, we're meeting the eighteenth.
No, the budget meeting is the eighteen.
With the school.
April? Yeah. We don't even gonna get our final aid number by then.
That's June fourth.
I don't know. The town, the FTM is the June fourth? We still have all that time, I don't know why, um. Okay, so if it's the eighteenth and we have to meet again.
Next week.
We know we're gonna meet like the sixteenth.
There's no school, how does that affect you?
I'll be here. And I think we gotta bite the bullet, because we gotta get this done, and I don't think it's gonna, I think we're gonna need the rest of this week and all of next week to get that right presentation and the charts, get the right, the twelve-month thing and, right? Do you want to push it out to then? So with the sixteenth.
Can I push back a little bit? Why wouldn't we meet next week?
Because he doesn't have time to do all the preparing.
Because she doesn't have time to do all the preparing. PowerPoint.
She, she's gotta do it one way or another, but if, if we, well, right, like, I mean, the calendar's not gonna change. I, you know, I I'm not being hurt, you. Now, it's, that's not just.
I'm just wondering if, if we meet with school committee next week for any questions or changes or whatever. Then we can start, we have a, we have that remaining time to get that PowerPoint together, I'm.
What's everybody's eleventh, the eleventh look like for people? A week from Thursday.
That actually works for me. That's probably the only.
Does that work for you? Colleen. Do you want to do another Friday? The twelfth? I mean, I don't have a life.
I can, I can do, you want to do Saturday night?
No, thank you.
Saturday at nine?
No, no, we're teasing. So the eleventh or the twelfth, we, we have to do it towards the end of the week.
The eleventh works for me.
Colleen, can you get it to one? Can we do like a six? Yeah, I'll just have to leave there by five.
We can do seven.
No.
Oh, that's the, that's the town council meeting where we have to. I got. Oh, it is?
Yeah, you're right, we're talking about the eleventh. Do we have to be there at that?
Yeah, I really go.
I don't know, I might have to go to jail, cause I'm the one to.
Oh, sorry.
I can't let Caitlin go by herself.
Yeah, no, okay, yeah, no, 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 I.
That's the eleven.
That's the eleventh, right. I mean, she's gonna speak to it, but I gotta be there with her.
What about the twelfth? Yeah, so why don't we meet on the twelfth? Is that okay with you?
I can't be here till after seven, but I can be here after.
Why don't we just have about seven?
No, cause that's too late for these guys, like, don't.
It's gonna take us an hour to go through them, we've already been through it.
What about the tenth? I can get it together quicker if I need to.
Yeah, but I have to check it. I'm worried about me.
I can't do the tenth.
All right.
I know.
Let's do the twelve.
Twelve, do the twelfth.
What time is, what time is the town council meeting?
Friday's brutal.
I can do it, it's just, you know.
She has a lot.
I can do the twelfth.
Or is, is honestly the next week, I'm gonna say I will not be here for part of that. Is it easier for you guys? To meet the beginning of the next week without me here?
You won't be here for the budget meeting anyway.
How about the fifteenth?
I'm just, I'm putting it to you guys, whatever, like, is it?
How about the fifteenth? And fifteenth, Brooke, it's a Monday. Is that, I'm more, I, I think what Lori said makes a lot of sense. That if you have changes, we need a day or two.
I want you to feel free to.
Make changes.
Make whatever changes you want to make, it's your budget.
But we get, so might be able to get it to you, though, the twelfth or the eleventh.
How, but I'm just trying to, Stephanie, what's better for you, the Friday or the Monday?
Monday, please.
That'll still give you enough time to.
Monday.
I will talk to you guys, I.
The deal breaker right there.
So any questions I have will.
Okay, so it's tax day, the fifteenth.
I'm sorry, when we decide?
The fifteenth.
Monday, the fifteenth.
Six o'clock.
Is that rain out here?
It's Kevin.
Holy cow.
Is Kevin gonna be?
Wow.
He's not cruising with us, so.
Poor Kevin.
Six o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
We said seven, seven.
I'm sorry, six.
Do I hear five?
Monday, April fifteenth.
When did we say we were gonna do it?
And then you will be presenting the budget.
For God's sake.
To the council.
But that does give me an extra day to get it to them.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not cutting too short.
Doesn't give you a lot of time, but.
I, I don't, but Lori, I don't.
Sorry, she'll see you Thursday.
I don't think, I mean, we all have this budget now, we all have time to digest. We can obviously reach out and do whatever that I don't know that there's going to be subs, right?
Okay.
Do you agree, like?
Then we're gonna start working on the PowerPoint, and then we can change whatever we need to. Cause I just don't want you to have to turn that around in twenty-four hours, that's all, that's a lot. Trying to keep her from quit.
I want to make sure.
That's a good thing. With what?
So, I just want to make sure I have this back.
So our next. Budget meeting is going to be on the fifteenth at six o'clock.
And then on the eighteenth.
We presented the town at either one of them.
Can we ask the town to move it to the final?
Sure.
I already asked.
Would you ask? What would she say? Well, then tell them to move that to the eighteenth and then move us to the twenty-fifth. What's on the twenty-fifth?
Too busy getting it done. No, Carolyn, go, I'm good, I'm good. I, I'm well represented.
But, but the problem is, though, I'm not even sure if we're gonna get the final state aid number by then. Like, it's, it's. And by the way, there's, there's two more state aid numbers. This next one, it will have the final uh ADM, which is the average daily membership. So they'll do the run.
And when, when you expect that?
Sometime in April, like maybe mid-April, it's gonna be close. We might not even have it, we might get it the day after or something. And then there's the final finals when they pass the budget.
But that won't be.
Till June.
Yeah. So, is there any? I don't know, just.
Just want to say it's not even eight thirty yet.
I know, good job.
All right, a lot going on here tonight. All right, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make motion to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.